Good morning. The September 12, 2023 Board Work Session is now in order. Paul, roll call please.
Mr. Susan?
Here.
Ms. Wright?
Here.
Mr. Trent?
Here.
Ms. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Jenkins?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for everybody that's watching today. We've got a 7,000 policy review. We added a public speaking discussion afterwards, and then any quick board comments. Wanted the board to know that Dr. Rendell moved forward, which was much needed in allowing staff to get ahead of our policies because, you know, they're ultimately the ones that make the recommendations and stuff like that, and if we have anything to add. So Dr. Rendell had our three individuals that head up the departments for each one of them that we're covering today. So the process is going to go that I'm going to read the actual policy, ask Dr. Rendell if he has anything to add, and then if we have anything to add for them, then we're going to move on to the next one, if that's okay with you guys. Okay?
My password is making me reset, like at this very moment.
So you need a minute?
You need a minute?
Nah, so we're good. Just keep going. I have my notes.
Okay.
I'll work on that.
Okay. So the first policy is going to be 7100, Facilities Planning. BPS has a current policy. Neola has a separate update. Facilities Recommendation. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to have Ms. Han respond to the next few of these. And we don't have this process perfected. We don't necessarily have a recommendation for each policy that's on the list, but for many of them, we do. So we're going to give you the recommendations that we have for the ones that we do have recommendations for. So Sue.
Yes, thank you, sir. For 7100, we would recommend that the board refer that to staff for some analysis and updating. We did update the Administrative Procedure in 2022. That was a detailed guide for the development of the Student Accommodation Plan, and that's working fine. But the policy language may want to look at some of the language in Neola, as well as introduce some language around Charter and Choice and how those play into Facilities Planning. So I'd like an opportunity to look at this one a little bit.
So the recommendation is to allow staff to look it over and then bring it back to us. Does anybody else from the board wish to make any comments? I also would like to recommend that if you feel like you have something that you may have missed or something like that, please feel free to reach out to Ms. Sue Han during the process of her review after we leave the meeting today. If you feel like you have to say something, that would be good, too. So at this point, does anybody else wish to speak about 7100?
Yeah, just briefly. I noticed in Letter B, and it says that you'll report to the board on the enrollment by grades during the school year monthly? I think we, or we used to get updates. I can't remember what they're called, but we get an email. But it's not broken down by grades, so maybe we could refine that language because I don't really need to know every month how many 5th graders, how many 4th graders, but more along the lines of the student count. That's not the name of the document, but that we get. Maybe make that more along the lines of what we're actually doing. It does break it down regionally and by grade bands, or elementary, middle, all that. But I don't want to put something in policy that we're not holding everybody to or would want to hold everybody to.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. And then the other thing I wanted to look at is the state law requires us to provide information every so often, I feel like it's monthly, about the number of available seats in each grade that has to be published on our website. So that may play into what we put into policy as well, that we at least respond to state law, which we are doing.
Right. If I could pull up the Neola ones in front of me, which I will be able to in a few minutes. I think it gave us some choices monthly, by semester or whatever. I'm cool with semester or whatever.
All good? Anybody else wish to comment? Okay, rolling on to, Dr. Rendell, you got the, Ms. Han's gonna, how do you want me to follow up?
She's going to go till, all the way to 7120, 7130, actually.
And you, you'd like me, you need me after every meeting, after every one, to kind of mention, hey, here's what I heard, or do you feel like you're comfortable about just?
I think we're recording it, so I think we're good.
Perfect. All right. 7101, Building Permits in the Code Enforcement Office. Dr. Rendell?
Yep, Ms. Han's going to take, like I said, all the way to 7130.
Okay.
Again, we'd like you to refer this one to staff. I would like to look at some type of a hybrid between what BPS has and Neola. We contract our building official services right now, so I may want to broaden the language to just is explicit about allowing for that. I'd also want to check the Building Code Reference. It's in Neola. I think it's updated. So there's a couple of things that I wanted to look at with this one, and nothing major in terms of our operations, but I do want to have an opportunity to have the policy reflect our actual work.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to comment on this policy? Hearing none, move on to 7110, Student Accommodations. Ms. Han?
Yes, 7110 as a policy, in my opinion, is fine as is. I do think the Administrative Procedure, the Boundary Change Procedure was updated in April of 2022, and that procedure is working well, so that's fine. The Administrative Procedures around school closures have not been updated in some time. We did not update that in 2022. I think those need to be updated, but I wanted to go through the Facility Planning Process that we're about to get started shortly, and that would probably be part of that process. So in terms of the policy update, I think the policy is okay as is, but this particular procedure does need to be updated.
Would you like to send us the old copy, or would you like us to wait until you make a recommendation for a new one?
I think you might as well wait, because I do think that the procedure really needs to be quite different than what it is now.
Okay. All right. Next one up is 7110 AP, School Attendance Boundary Procedure, School Closure Scope, School Closure Analysis. I understand, I understand, guys. Are we all okay with the current way that we're going to do it is update 7110, Ms. Han? And yours will all be contained inside of there?
Yes, so 7110, the policy, I think, is okay.
Just want to make sure I've got this list I'm going through.
Yep, so the 7110 Administrative Procedure is okay as is, and 7110 A and B Administrative Procedure, both of those need to be updated.
Okay. Next one up is 7130, Implementation and Management of School Concurrentity. Ms. Han?
This is solely a Brevard policy. There's no Neola reference because this is a reflection of our inter-local agreement and defines how we do school concurrency. This is based on our inter-local agreement, and our opinion is it's fine as is.
Yeah, and there's a couple of administrative procedures attached to it that we might need to update, so I wanted to say thank you. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak to 7130? No? Okay. Next up is going to be 7217 Weapons. Dr. Rendell?
Yeah, so we would like you to refer that to staff, both 7217 and the subsequent sections. We have the Chief of Schools and Student Services reviewing this right now.
Okay, and you said subsequent sections. Would that be the next one, which is 7230? Or is that subsequent sections just being 7217?
Oh, the 7217.
Okay. Is there anybody that wishes to speak to the Weapons 7217?
Yeah, that one had not only July updates, but also a September update that Ron had just sent us, so we'll make sure we incorporate all that in there.
Yep. We're good?
Yep.
All right. Next one up is 7230, Gifts, Grants, and Bequests. Dr. Rendell?
So Human Resources is looking at that, so we'd like to refer it to staff, and we'll give you something back.
Okay, does anybody wish to speak to 7230?
I like ours.
Okay.
Oh, I did have on this, I think it's this one. There is a section that, I think it's on, I just don't have it close enough. Here we go. Thank you. There's a section that says, talks about the grant procedures, and I've tried to find that. It's actually in Administrative Procedure 6111. So if we can maybe, like, if we're going back into it, if we can hotlink that. And then we also have 9230, which is the same thing. So when we do them, maybe we have one or the other, or make them match at least, so that we're not saying, because from what I can tell, they're just about the same.
Yeah, and Ms. Lazinski corrected me. She's got this one.
Okay.
And so.
Go ahead, Ms. Lazinski.
Ms. Campbell, I agree with you. There are like three different policies that kind of reach out to the different areas, and what we want to do is to be able to take a look at them and make sure that it makes sense and the policies in there. The biggest thing is to make sure PTOs and boosters and those understand what the rules are and people are taking the correct responsibility.
I appreciate that. That's all.
Yeah, and just so everybody knows, Dr. Rendell and I have met, and there's a series of those that you're going to run into where they are in multiple spots, right? So what staff's doing is they've identified each one of them. They're in the process of saying, hey, they're in three different spots. Let's pull them together. Where's the appropriate place and everything else? So you may see more of that as we get moving. Okay, 7240, Dr. Rendell?
Yes, we're going to go back to Ms. Han for a little while.
7240, looked at that. In my opinion, that's fine as is.
Is there anybody here that wishes to add anything to 7240, Site Acquisition?
There was a place, I just had a question. Sorry, I'm behind on my clicking. There is a part that Paul, that says, talks about an executive session. Discussion of possible school sites may be carried on in an executive session. Is that? Is that, is that because it's a legal meeting?
The rush now would be because if it gets out publicly that the board may be looking at some sites, that could jeopardize, I guess, a fair negotiation process because now there's going to be increased demand. I would have to double-check to make sure that that exemption still is there.
Right. I mean, Neola still has it in there, but that's just, it was just kind of one of those things that triggered. I was like, wait a minute, that's one of the things you do your training of what you can.
They haven't updated there since 2002, so I'm assuming it's still there. But those are set to sunset every five years, so I would want to double-check and make sure it didn't sunset.
And so that was my question. Other than that, it's fine. This was fine.
Anybody else in reference to the policy? Okay. Next up is going to be 7250, Commemoration of School Facilities.
Yes, sir. That had a substantial upgrade in June of 2022, and we're pretty satisfied with the way that's working. May address the reference to Leading and Learning, but other than that, the procedural aspects of the policy are fine.
There was some reference recently. Okay, I'm sorry. Did you have anything? Did anybody else have anything to say on this topic?
No, ours is more detailed, so I prefer ours.
There was some concern wrapped around a couple of the policies in saying that once you named a facility, you are not allowed to name another facility for five years inside of your school. Is that anywhere that you see? Because that came to me from one of our principals that was trying to rename something. Are you seeing that? Did you see that anywhere? Like, if I name my library, I can't name another facility for five years inside my school.
Let me take a look at that. That wasn't the intent.
Yeah, I think, that's exactly what I think. I think what they were trying to say is you can't rename the actual facility, and I think that that is the intent of the policy. I just wanted to make sure that we get some sort of clarification over that because we have a couple of schools that are trying to name a couple of things, and we just want to make sure that that's okay.
Okay.
Anybody else on that?
Yeah, that says, "Schools that complete the renaming process under this section may not be considered for renaming for at least five calendar years following board action." So I think that's just saying you can't rename a school, yeah, every, within five years.
They should be good to go.
Yep. Well, I just think that we need a little bit of clarification on that one, and that would be good. Next up, does anybody else wish to have anything on 7250? Next up is 7300, Property Custodianship. Ms. Han?
That may be Ms. Lazinski.
Yeah, Ms. Lazinski's taking that one. Okay. There you go.
Okay, for this one, it is not a Neola policy. However, we do want to make sure that we are making sure that principals and directors are, you know, managing and taking care of their assets and equipment and knowing where they are, those kind of things. And then there's a C and D, which really don't fit in here. It talks about making sure that the lights and the water and the power and everything is there. So I think I would like to look at moving the A and B into another policy to make it all one, and then work with facilities on C and D.
This is Neola's template.
I'm sorry?
This is a Neola template.
They're exact, they're identical.
Yeah, they're the same. We just filled in the gaps and designated who.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought there was no, okay.
Yep.
So the Neola, I don't know why they put those two together.
Yeah, you can make changes. It's fine. But yeah, it is, just to clarify, it is a Neola template.
Okay, thank you.
So we're going to work on that one and bring it back.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, checking it out. All right. Next up is 7305, Easements.
That's mine, and I would like to recommend that you refer that to staff. The policy is really okay as it is, but every once in a while, we have a request for an easement where we should be compensated for the value of that easement. And so I'd like to potentially incorporate some language around getting an appraisal and getting appraised value for the value of the easement.
Could we be putting in there also, as far as the advertising and stuff like that that we have? Any kind of definitions for, we run into the Department of Transportation and some of those others. Is this an area that we could enter into that, or do you think that this is just specifically for the transactional?
This is just specifically for easements.
All right. Okay. Anybody else have anything to say on easement 7305? All right. Next up is 7310, Disposition of Surplus Property. I'm assuming this goes back to Ms. Lazinski.
Yes, that's correct.
This one we are very happy with, and there's just going to be a couple minor changes.
Yeah, Administrative Procedure updated in 2010. I'm sure that that's where it's going to go. Does anybody else wish to speak to this policy?
7310, we don't have D. We don't have the rest of the disposition part. Is that what you're just saying? Like, ours ends with like one paragraph of disposition, and then the Neola template has a lot more. So if we can incorporate those sections, I think it was a little more specific with how we get rid of stuff, for lack of a...
Yeah, and I think we have a pretty strong, robust process. I would find that if it's not anywhere in our policies. But did you understand what Ms. Lazinski, what she was trying to say? She's just trying to say that there's a Neola portion of it. It may be in another place to deal with the disposition.
Right, and that falls under procurement, but we can make sure that this is all in one, so it makes sense.
Right, as long as it's in there somewhere.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, and thank you, Ms. Wright, for pointing that out. The next one is 7320, Acquisition, Removal, Disposition, Sale or Exchange of Major Tangible Personal Property. Ms. Lazinski?
So that's actually under the Chief Operating Officer, Chief of Operations. So he's going to review that and bring it back.
Okay. Anybody else wish to have anything to say about this one policy?
I, yeah, I would like to chime in on this one. Rashad, you know where I'm going with this one? I think we received emails, and so just making sure we tighten that thing up so that we don't, we no longer are disposing of something that could be used or donated. That's been something that the community has been very vocal about, taking pictures of. So anything we can do to tighten that up would be good. Thank you. Appreciate you.
That was in 7310, though, or that was the one I was talking about, that we have one paragraph on disposition, and the Neola template has like quite a bit more that we would want to include. This one, what I had written down was that we don't have that section on school memorials and gifts that we probably need to add in there, which would kind of be a couple of your roms.
Yeah, it was kind of in an earlier policy, too.
The memorial, the gifts?
Yeah.
Yeah, they blend. But as long as we have it in there somewhere.
We'll try to make sure everything matches.
Yeah, that one had a 2020 update, so I don't know if that was the newer language that needed to be added.
So we're good with taking a look at it, bringing it back, and any cross-references cleaning up, right? Okay. Next up is Policy 7410. Dr. Rendell?
Yeah, I think that's Sue's got that.
That one's back to me. So I'd actually like to suggest some fairly significant changes to this policy that are over and above what's in Neola or what's in our current policy. And those relate to institutionalizing our best practices of doing periodic facility assessments, doing facility asset management programs, and then incorporating something about standards for building and grounds maintenance. And that's been a big issue for us here in Brevard over the last several years. And I think we're moving towards trying to fully resolve that issue. It certainly has budget implications, but I feel like from a policy perspective, if we incorporate those things, then it is sending a message in terms of how we develop our budgets that those things are important. So I'm going to suggest that we incorporate at least those three things into this policy.
And I wanted to say, in this policy, Ms. Han took over and started a process where she was putting QR codes on many of our, many of our maintenance things, like, you know, HVAC systems and stuff like that. And prior to that, we would just find out, this thing broke, and then they would have to go out and try to figure out what it was, what year it was, what a replacement. And now, we've done a good job, or you have done a good job, I'm saying, of QR coding most of them to where we know that there's a cycle of, we need to buy this many at this time to make sure we cover it, and you're getting there. I just wanted to say thank you for that. That was a huge undertaking, and I don't know if the new board members know about it.
Well, thanks. This is really a best practice in facility management, and we're doing pretty well in comparison to other districts. I'm really proud of the program that our folks have developed. So I'd like to give it a little bit more weight in policy, other than where it is now. It's just something that we're doing.
Well, I really appreciate that. Anybody else have anything to say to 7410 Maintenance? All right. Next up is 7420, Sanitation and Housekeeping. Dr. Rendell, is this Ms. Han?
That's me.
Again, Sue.
Yep, that's me, and recommend just leaving that as is.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to add anything to it?
20, 20?
Yeah, Neola has an update. We didn't update it since 2020, 2002.
We've updated ours since then.
If you feel, if you feel, ours just says Neola 2002. We revised it on the 14. But Ms. Han, if you feel confident that this is something that we should keep, then this is your area. I'm okay with that. All right. Anybody else? Nope. All right. Moving forward, 7421, Restrooms and Changing Facilities.
So we do not have a policy currently, so we're looking for board direction on this one.
So.
So this is an update that came to us from Neola that we said we needed it. I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Campbell.
Well, I was, I was going to ask, is this, I mean, we're complying with state law. I was going to ask Paul, do we need this to clarify for clarity for our staff? And to, do we need, well, first, do we need to have the policy for compliance? I couldn't find anywhere where it said, it just said, by such and such time, you have to report how you're handling things. But I didn't know if we needed the policy for compliance, so that was one question. But then, secondly, really to Dr. Rendell, do we need this for clarity so that all our district staff can understand this is how we're handling things?
Yeah, typically, policy helps you answer all those questions. So typically, you would want something in policy, you know, clear definitions, black and white, that kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah. I'm in favor of us including this for clarity for public and for staff.
Anybody else?
I support including it as well.
Okay, I do, too. Dr. Rendell, if you can look back at it, there's a couple of options on there. I think maybe bring back a formalized policy.
Yeah, we'll take a look at the, I think there's three different options to choose from and different language in there, and we'll bring you back something.
Okay. All right. With that, next up is 7430, Risk Reduction Program. Dr. Rendell?
That is with finance, with Cindy.
Ms. Lazinski?
We definitely want to keep this one and actually look, work with facilities and robust that because we want to make sure that we're reducing risk as much as possible.
Sure. Okay, so send it to you. You guys will bring it back to us. Dr. Rendell, just out of curiosity, the turnaround on some of these policies, is there a, just for the board to know, are we looking at 30 days of having staff look at them? What are you thinking?
Well, really, we're looking at the cycle that you're in. As you get through each series of policies, we try to, you know, fall right in line with, when you get, when you're done with the sevens, you get to the eights and so on, we bring them back. Some of these we can fast-track if we need to, you know.
So if we, if we are coming up with the eights, maybe the idea is that the 1,000s are on the deck and coming for renewal, you know what I mean?
Correct. Like, if you think about next week's workshop, we've got some 1,000 policies that have been revised, coming back for public hearing and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, you know, the first public hearing's next board workshop for all of the ones.
I think, I think for the most part, the idea would be that, you know what I mean? We have some sort of a plan moving forward of, the thousands are here, the 2,000s and everything else. So I appreciate that.
We can send you kind of a calendar.
Yeah.
Like, when we believe these policies will be ready to bring back to you.
With the understanding that some of them take a little bit longer than others, and some of them may need to reach out for further clarification and stuff. But for the most part, just a generalized one would be good. Okay. Next up is 7430. Point 01, Environmental Health Program. Okay, next up is seventy-four thirty, point zero one, environmental health program. We don't have a policy. Neola has one. What do you think, Dr. Rindell?
I think Sue was ready to jump in on that.
I'll grab this one. I'd like to take a look at that. I'll take the lead from a department point of view, but we've got several other departments that might have been put into this potential policy. So, we'll come back to you with a recommendation on it.
Okay. So, the, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We have this at eighty-four hundred, a lot, I mean, that I could tell was very similar, at least, and that we did update in two thousand and twenty, so we can take a look and see if that's, we haven't got to eight thousands yet, so I don't know what the templates look like. But if we can see if that's our, if we already have all that content there, then maybe we don't need the new policy.
We're good with that, Ms. Hand?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Moving on, seventy-four thirty-four, smoking and tobacco-free environments. Again, there is a Neola policy that we have. We do not currently have one, but I do know we have some rules around smoking and stuff like that. Ms. Hand, you wish to, is this your area?
It is not.
Okay, Dr. Rindell, I apologize.
Yeah, no, this is, both falls under operations. It also falls under chief of schools. It also falls under risk management. So, we're reviewing this and we'll bring it back.
Okay.
So, before we get off this one, we have this at thirty-two fifteen, and then we had this conversation in the five thousands about, because in the student section, I remember Ms. Wright member said, let's have it both places, so it's very clear, people look at it. So, but I don't think we need it in three places. So, so we have it for, in the thirty-two fifteen, which I think is a staff section, and we've got, and we're, we've talked about adding it in the five thousands and the student section.
Student section, correct.
And we most recently updated in two thousand and twenty-one, so I think we might be good with...
And the idea is to always make it mirror. If it's in three thousands and five thousand, it's the language that all read.
Right, and honestly, I mean, I guess it is a facilities-type thing, but really, it's more of a behavior-type thing. So, I think that where, those other two sections is a more appropriate place.
And again, I think, these are the ones, we're gonna come across many of these, where staff can give us the recommendations. Thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Campbell. Next up is seventy-four forty, buildings and ground security. I'm assuming that I'm gonna ask Dr. Rindell who has this one.
It's all operations, and that whole section of the seventy-four forties, we're reviewing all of that. I don't know if Mr. Wilson has anything to add right now, but, you know.
Would you like me just to say seventy-four forty, seventy-four forty point zero one, seventy-four forty point zero two, zero three, all are gonna be reviewed by Mr. Wilson and come back, or do you guys wanna?
One of them, I think Russ said he wants to have conversation, right, over the video surveillance and electronic monitoring?
Yeah, it's just, it's a cross-functional one, so it's Rashad, myself, and Ms. Hand.
That's the seventy-four.
Yeah, okay. Well, then, we'll just say, so seventy-four forty, Rashad's gonna work on it and bring back a recommendation if needed to be. Is that right, Dr. Rindell?
Correct.
And then seventy-four forty point zero one, video surveillance and electronic monitoring. Did you have something to say, Mr. Tatum?
Well, he wrote that on his spreadsheet. He said discussion was needed, so that's why.
Hang on just a second. I don't wanna get off of seventy-four forty yet. And I, don't rush, because we might have a comment along the way.
I didn't have anybody speak up.
I didn't get a chance. He didn't pause long enough. I see the note, must remove resident mobile homes. I saw that in there, like, what on earth? So, is that some, I know that we used to do it, because there was a mobile home on the campus of Central Middle School that just recently got removed, literally in the last year, and I, somebody was living in there, and I always, it was just some kind of random. So, how did that come about? Why, are we still, is that the only place where it was done, or? Do we still have people living on our campuses? I mean...
There's approximately sixteen in the district.
And are there people who live there? Just people who apply to live there?
No, they were long, I guess, long before any of us got here, they were security for the site. So, they were, they agreed to monitor the site, and they would check the doors and the property to make sure nothing was going on at night when it was closed. And this is all before the new security requirements and fencing and cameras and all of that. So, they've just never been terminated. So, they've just continued to function in that capacity.
Are we paying them, or are we just providing?
No, they get free rent. They basically get a lot.
They rent their trailer, and they monitor the property in exchange for the free lot.
It is inventive, and I'm, but I mean, have, we still have people that...
So, we do have about sixteen of those mobile homes on our campuses, on sixteen campuses. And we did make the decision earlier to let them know that we're gonna terminate this policy at the end of June.
Okay.
So, this will be the last year any of them.
Of June of two thousand and twenty-four?
June of twenty-four.
Okay, so they've got some time to relocate.
So, we are going to stop this practice. This is something that done years ago, as Mr. Gibbs mentioned, to provide an extra layer of security for our campuses, usually at night and on the weekends, you know, when we're not occupied. So, these individuals were allowed to live there, basically rent-free, in return for providing a security service.
Right.
In a lot of the cases, that security service is actually not provided. And so, we're not seeing the return on investment, so to speak, even though we don't really have an investment. But, really, with the new security procedures, we don't want anybody living on our campuses.
Right, right.
So, this is something that was supposed to be phased out years ago, and it never had gotten phased out, so now we're phasing it out.
Well, that solved a mystery for me. I don't know why I didn't ask that question before, but thank you. I appreciate that.
So, I did want to tell you guys, when I was a teacher at Space Coast, they used to do reverse sound. So, what would happen is the sound from Space Coast High School would go back into the house of the person that was staying there, in between there and Enterprise. So, if there was a loud noise at night, it would pop, and they would know to check, call security, stuff like that. So, those were some of the things that people had put in place with these individuals to make sure that they were safe. And it did actually end up catching a couple of kids trying to play pranks and a couple of other people trying to break in. So, it was actually pretty good. The one that I did want to tell you guys about that was pretty funny, was we had one that was staying at a location and then put it up for sale and tried to sell it. And that was a whole ordeal that we had to deal with. It was in my district, and it was pretty funny, because, and it wasn't even the person that we had originally signed it with. It was somebody else who had been living there after that person had deceased. And it was, and there was a whole battle, and it was an interesting thing, so.
Yeah, it actually seems...
I think we're at a different place now for our security and stuff like that, so we're in a different place altogether, so thank you for doing that. But I did wanna put some context to some of it. There are some good things, and there are some bad things. And then, there's one that was growing chickens on the thing, and that was an interesting thing, too, so.
Science.
No, it wasn't science. It was not.
It actually seems like it would be counterintuitive now, because if you open it to a driveway, because someone lives there, then you're opening the fence, external fencing to let other people. So, I think this is a good, a good time with all the new rules. Absolutely, I'm supportive of that.
I have a quick question, just to chime into this. Sue, I'm sure you know this, but as far as the residents that are living on these sixteen different properties, is there any way you can give the board some feedback on how long these people have been there? I mean, is this gonna be someone that's been on campus? I mean, I just think about a family that's been there for thirty years or something, and they're like, oh, now you have to move, and we're kicking you out. And so, I, just so you can give that to us, so that we know that and prepare for that coming up, that would be good.
I have those contracts currently, because I drafted the notices, so I can email you all.
Okay, thank you. I would like that.
How long everybody's been on, and what the properties are that they're located.
Okay, thank you.
In most cases, I don't think that the schools actually had communications with many of them before. So, I think that this is something, all the ones I've ever had.
Yeah.
They were not communicating back and forth. They were just there, and it was kind of an odd thing. So, I just wanna kind of add that context. There are maybe some that they have relationships, but I don't.
The ones I know about, they typically are not families. They're generally single individuals.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, I would just like to know that.
Sure. Alright.
So, that was just seven forty, seventy-four forty, and seventy-four, seventy-four forty oh one, I believe. Russ does wanna make a comment.
But I did wanna finish up on that one. We do have some custodians that actually live in those. So, there is one that I know of, so that we may wanna take a look at, because that may be an added incentive for somebody that's working there to be there.
The issue with having a security trailer on site is that it's, they're not separate from the campus. And so, these, this is their, someone's home, and they can invite literally anyone at any time onto the campus and not go through our security protocols, so that's, that's the reason why we think this is no longer an appropriate security function. And in a few cases, we're looking at doing some fencing around the security trailer to make sure that they are separate from campus. In those cases, where we're concerned about them being like a safety hazard, where they're close to the road or something like that.
Yeah, okay. Alright, thank you. Next one up, Dr. Rindell, video surveillance and electronic monitoring. You had something to say?
Mr. Tatum, did you wanna jump?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. That's a, it's cross-functional between ET, operations, and facilities, so we'll be bringing, we'll be reviewing it and bringing that back to the board.
Okay. Anybody else wish to have anything to say on that one?
The note, the difference that I noticed was the parental consent part, so we need to have that. I mean, it's basically, anything that we would be recording for is going to fall under that educational purposes and things like that. But we, it, I'm gonna just guess that that was that two thousand and twenty-one update, because that falls under the line, the year that they were, we were doing the parental rights bill. So, that's, that's the section that I noticed that we don't, we do not have.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay. Good, Mr. Tatum? Alright, moving forward, seventy-four forty point zero one, damage or loss. Dr. Rindell?
So, again, this is something I believe staff's gonna review and bring back. This is with Ms. Lesinski. Any comments, or?
No, that's something that we need to...
Review and bring back?
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on seventy-four forty point zero two?
Their, theirs has a lot more legal ramifications, as far as what we can do if someone does damage. I don't know if you noticed that, Paul, but there was in the Neola template, even though they were from the same year, it had more, and we could potentially go out to get damages and things like that. So, I'd like your advisement on that one, too.
It's really, I know some boards are hesitant to take legal action against students, so that's probably why the board in two thousand and two, they said, no, we're not gonna be suing our families for it. So, they chose not to implement certain provisions, but I don't know how we'd find that other than trying to dig up minutes if they still exist from two thousand and two.
Well, and it's not that I'm looking to go, but, I mean, I can foresee a situation that might be bigger than...
We can include it and use a language that's permissive, like May.
Right.
So, then, it's up to the board at the time to decide whether or not it wants to take those legal steps.
I think that's probably a wise decision. I mean, we had an incident with one of my schools last year where a fire was started in the bathroom intentionally by a student.
Right, with the TikTok challenges and things, yeah. Things have changed significantly since two thousand and two.
Exactly. I mean, they were dismantling our bathrooms and doing all kinds of stuff, so it's probably good to have the ability to exercise that, should it be something that's just so out there, you know?
At least just have it in policy, so people are aware that that's, that's a potential.
It's a potential, right.
Good. Anybody else? Alright, staff's gonna bring back a recommendation, and again, if anybody has anything in the process to follow up with, please do so. Seventy-four point, seventy-four forty point zero two, damage or loss?
Oh, three.
Yeah, we just did that.
I'm sorry. Seventy-four forty point zero three, small unmanned aircraft systems.
We just went through this one, right?
Yeah.
We just revised that one, so we just prefer to keep it.
Yeah, it's just straight to the law of the DOE for not using those.
Seventy-four forty point zero three.
Alright. Alright, anybody else got anything to say on that one?
Nope.
Nope, alright. Seventy-four fifty, property inventory. Dr. Rindell?
Yeah, that was with, I believe, with you as well, yep.
Right, and this is another one that we want to have our staff take a look at and review, and make sure that we include grant managers and responsibility for the different areas.
Okay. Anybody have any comments on this one? Nope. Moving forward, seventy-four fifty-five, accounting system for fixed assets. Dr. Rindell?
I think that's the same with Ms. Lesinski. We wanna review that, correct, with some changes we've already identified.
We wanna keep, but update.
Okay.
Is there a difference between, is there a purposeful difference between using fixed and capital? I was checking the statutes, and they don't really, and the rule, they don't really use one or the other. Was that just a Brevard decision, or does it legally matter? You don't think so?
Part of the changes was crossing out capital and putting fixed, so.
Okay, and then, there was, there is an administrative procedure. I gotta read my notes. I said administrative procedure seventy-three ten. Why do I have that in there? Oh, the disposition. If we go, if we update the disposition policy, there was something in there that needs to be related to that. Okay, well, y'all look at that. I can't remember what. I didn't write down enough notes to remember what it was. Oh, the superintendent shall develop administrative procedures to ensure proper purchase, transfer, and disposal of fixed assets. That's what I was saying. We already have that administrative procedure at, but not with this one. It's at seventy-three ten. So, you know, it doesn't have to be with this one, but, but I, if we're gonna say something has a procedure, in this case, we have it. It's just not located here. So, do with that what you want. If anyone would just link it or something, that would be good.
Did you guys understand that?
Yes.
Okay. So, anybody else have anything to say? Nope. Seventy-four fifty-five is in the good. Moving on, seventy-four sixty, conservation of natural material resources. Talked about this policy having some discussion. We've had some discussion around this, too. Ms. Suhan?
Self in the Neola version, I, they're sort of inert, but we often have competing, competing interests in this arena. So, for example, having a very strong recycling goal might actually cost us more money. Saving money might cause us to do draconian measures around air conditioning.
Right.
So, there's often a competing priority in this arena. So, if, if the board would like to keep a policy around consideration of conservation in the context of other goals, I can, I can write something that says that, but wanted to, wanted to just ask what you all think about this policy.
I had a lot to talk about on this, but I'll give you guys the opportunity to speak ahead of me.
So, if I'm hearing you correctly, so, so like our practice of cutting off the air conditionings for extended periods of time, every time I go out with someone who is an air conditioning person, they say, this is not good, because we, you know, you wouldn't do this in your home. It's hard on the machines or whatever. Is this policy driving that? Or is it just cost, because I always thought that was cost savings, but then in the end, you have to balance the cost savings of cutting the ACs off versus damage to your equipment.
Right, so we've actually made decisions to not do that because of the damage to our stuff. And, and so, we've been lowering our set points to, and we're running the air conditioning more, because we want our folks to be comfortable in their buildings. If we don't do that, it leads to indoor air quality issues, and we chase those all around. So, there's, like I said, a lot of competing interests. I think I could wordsmith something that addresses the fact that there are competing interests. And conservation is a good goal, but it's not the only goal. And I think it needs to be in the context of some of our other priorities, so.
Right. No, I appreciate that. And if your recommendation is to, because, like you said, it's inert, it's a pretty benign policy in general, on the surface.
Right.
But if it's causing problems, and we're not with us having to put this as a goal, I'm fine with removing it.
Anybody else? No?
No.
Alright.
He was going for it.
Okay, so, when I, when I look at this, we have solar, natural gas, battery, we have all of these things, right? And consistently, we have individuals coming and saying, hey, we can make natural gas buses, and they can run and save you money. And solar, you won't have to pay for electricity after five years. And, and there are some things that, when you look at them, you're like, hey, it's our due diligence to take a look at those. And I know that you're already doing that. In like fuel sources and everything else, I wonder if there's an opportunity for us to do like a every-three-year review and have a, you know, bring forward, hey, here's what the newest technologies are, here's where the cost breaks are on them. That might be a little bit more of a formal process, so that we're not missing some of those components. What do you think about that, Ms. Hand?
So, like I said, I think I can wordsmith something that addresses that, because we do exactly what you suggested. So, for example, we're doing several roof projects. We looked at solar.
Yeah.
It's not going to save us money at this point in time, and it has the potential to damage the roof. So, you know, there, again, competing interests, but yes, we certainly do wanna look at new technology. Same thing in fuel sources. I know Mr. Wilson's been looking at different fuel sources and buses, you know, for the bus fleet. You know, great best practice, but we gotta be able to get natural gas. We gotta be able to have electric charging station. Like, like the source of those alternative fuels has to be readily available, too. So, I think what you're suggesting, Mr. Susan, might be a way to kind of keep the policy, but we would, we would generate our own language around those different competing interests.
Yeah, and I think, I think in, just in practice, is to review any kind of innovative pieces in this. Like, even the recycling piece, there's some innovation inside of there. There's, I was in one county, and the county government tied with the school district and had this trash recycling program that created energy, and they were, I mean, there's some cool stuff out there, right? But I wonder if there's an opportunity to do that, and then maybe there's an opportunity where we have a work session every three years or something like that that says, or every two years, this is what it is, this is what we evaluated, and stuff like that. Since you're doing it already, our public will know, we, you know, these guys that come up and try to sell solar, and they try to do this, they try to do that. Hey, listen, we already did that. Here's the workshop, here's the individual, here's your opportunity to talk to, more of a formal process, that's all.
Yeah, and, and we are looking at different sort of like energy conservation techniques. And are there opportunities to do little pilot projects in our schools that tie to the STEM program? So like that type of thing, I think we have some good opportunities there where we can, we can try little things and see if they are scalable throughout the district. So I think I, I get what you are saying and we'll try to wordsmith something that will get us there.
I think we're, 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 the strong language, the, the absolute language of mandate the district implement strategies which will conserve all forms of energy used and/or ensure proper recycling. We want, I think it would be good to, at the same time, you know, talk about the, all the things that we are doing. But I'm glad you brought up thinking about the buses because there have been some districts that said, we're going to start implementing until we get to all electric buses, for example. But if you read the news reports that are coming out in recent news, it talks about the cost of batteries and all that. So we're, you know, you're causing as much or more cost as you might be saving and, and maybe even messing up the environment on top of it, too, worse. So I'm not interested in being a guinea pig and we'll kind of let everybody work out the kinks until future boards and generations can take a look and they've got it kind of more perfected on a better for the environment, better for the, the pocketbooks of our taxpayers. But I think those, if we can, if you've got words that you can put in that, that would not tie us into things that we may not want to do or maybe bad for the environment or bad for our budget, I, I would appreciate that. Or removing it altogether, which was your original suggestion. I'm fine with that, too.
You know, Ms. Hand, you put together that process for us to go to these large, like the one we have in October 12th for the Veterans Memorial, you know what I mean, for the veterans. Maybe there's a process to do this, too, that you can think of and then we can go there. So that's all, just a thought.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be in the policy, but maybe, you know what I mean, a, a review or something every so many years or something.
Okay.
Okay?
I think, I think I can craft something, so.
Perfect, perfect. Okay, does anybody else have anything on conservation of natural and material resources? Moving on, seventy-five ten, use of district facilities. Dr. Rendell?
Yeah, so we were going to propose just leave this policy as is. We updated the administrative procedures just last year.
Okay.
So we were just going to leave it.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Yep. Yeah, I, I appreciate that. And Dr. Rendell, I'm sure as you do your municipality tours, you'll be hearing some, some, some concerns when it comes to some of that district use. So if you could just put it on your long list of things to ask and, and touch base with as you do those tours, just because I know that there's some concerns. That may not necessarily be accurate, but it might be a little bit of miscommunication and stuff.
Yeah, we can try and clear some of that up, absolutely. Thank you, yep. I, I think I know some of the things you're talking about.
Okay. Moving on, seventy-five eleven, media broadcast of student athletic competitions. I do know that this is being reviewed currently by our athletic department. If anybody has anything to kind of mention, but I think I would wait until he brings that out to kind of then wordsmith it. Okay? If you guys are okay with that? All right.
Okay.
Moving on to seventy-five thirty, lending of board-owned equipment. We have a Neola policy. Dr. Rendell, what's your, your, your deal?
Actually, Mr. Cheatham's going to jump in on this one, I think.
Yeah, this is another cross-functional. You think of laptops, but you also think about other equipment that we, we lend out. Some equipment we check out, but this is lending. And this also, I think, includes risk management because when folks use our facilities and things like that, we're just making sure those, those items don't go missing or leave our campuses.
Ms. Lozinski, you have something to say?
And there's processes for accounting to make sure that we are keeping track of our things. So there's, there's several, it's a combined policy that we need to work.
That's great.
I, I have a question and this might just be a technical issue. But when I look at our website for this policy, it's not there, seventy-five thirty?
We do not have that.
Okay. All right.
So we're taking a look at the Neola template, seeing what we want to.
Sorry, I was.
Adopt.
There's a lot of gray areas there, so I appreciate you guys' work on that. Anybody else have anything to say?
So what you guys are saying is you do recommend, I think this is the one you did say.
Yes. Oh, yeah, we want to adopt something.
Gotcha.
Yep.
And you noticed these numbers are starting to cross over. So there was like a renumbering done by Neola at some point, so.
Yep. No further comment. We'll move on to seventy-five thirty point zero one, staff use of cell phones, pages, pages, and two-way radios. We have a Neola update since this year. What is the direction, Dr. Rendell?
Yeah, so our notice recommends not to adopt the Neola policy to keep ours.
And it doesn't have any statutory laws that are to it, so you guys are okay with that?
Wait, I thought you had said to recommend, but not version one, version two.
Let me check.
On the sheet that Russell sent, not to do version one, which was the cellphone allowance, but to do version two, which is the board-owned wireless communications device.
Correct, because we don't do cellphone allowances, so we're not doing version one.
Right.
And version two will be replacing seventy-five thirty point zero one.
Gotcha.
Yep.
With the July updates.
Correct.
I wasn't sure if what you sent us on the email included the July updates or not.
So let me explain. So the, the items that I sent you guys in the educational technology, Neola templates, there are tons of options. So instead of making you guys go through every single one of those options, what I sent you guys was our proposed, our recommended selections.
Yes.
For each one of those options.
I love that.
Yes.
Kind of streamlined the, the review of those. So as you look at those, it's just the options that BPS would recommend. Once you approve those, then we'll add the BPS language that's specific for our district afterwards.
But that was my, did, when you did, when you sent that, and it was very helpful, thank you. Did that include those July updates?
It's the latest version that I have.
The very latest, okay, okay. It probably won't include the September ones because those just came out. There were a couple of yours that had the September.
These change all the time, so it's, it's technology, they're always.
Right, right. So when you bring it back to us, it'll have them as.
Correct.
Thank you for doing that, by the way.
So everybody, anybody other comments on this? Okay, moving forward, seventy-five forty, computer technology and networks.
Again, that's Mr. Cheatham.
So we'll be replacing this with the Neola seventy-five forty template. And I provided the, the recommended changes to you guys.
Beautiful, and thank you for those notes. It's exactly what you said. Anybody have any comments on seventy-five forty?
I think we skipped seventy-five thirty point oh two.
That's what we were just on.
I thought we were on seventy-five thirty point oh one, version two.
Well, we have seventy-five.
Forty, and we'll get to forty oh one, oh two, oh three.
Right.
Right, right, right.
And he had just given the direction.
Right, right, well, somewhere in there missed.
Seventy-five forty, you good on that direction? We're going to bring that back, move it to seventy-five. I'm not sure where you're, I mean, he had given recommendation that seventy-five forty point zero one, seventy-five forty point zero two.
I know we haven't gotten there yet.
One, seventy-five thirty.
Right, seventy-five thirty. If you.
Yeah, yeah.
So we have seventy-five thirty point zero one, which we went and he said that he was going to work on tying that into seventy-five thirty, right? He had mentioned that he's going to bring back Neola template seventy-five thirty point zero one.
Yes, so seventy-five thirty oh one will be replaced by the Neola template seventy-five thirty ver, oh one, version two.
Right.
And you don't have a seventy-five thirty point zero two.
Right. Well, I didn't hear the recommendation for that. So you, we, we need, you're recommending that we add seventy-five thirty point oh two.
Correct.
Correct.
Which is going to replace, gotcha. Okay, now, sorry, I just, nobody, I didn't hear point oh two.
Anytime, anytime you need clarification, just let me know. Seventy, seventy-five forty, computer technology and networks. Dr. Rendell?
Again, that's for Russell.
We'll be replacing that with the Neola template. And I sent you guys the, the recommended changes.
Yep, you got that inside of you.
It got rid of MySpace.
Needed a little update.
I don't know why, it might come back.
Right, oh, yeah. Do we have pagers?
Still says pagers, yes.
Do pagers still exist?
My, my note on this one is that on seventy-five forty, there are a lot of administrative procedures. And I would request that we check them for accuracy and relevance because a lot of them are quite old and in the world of technology.
So what we hope to do is approve the Neola policies and then we'll go back through the administrative procedures to make sure they match the changes.
Right, match them up.
Okay. And I'm fine with deleting MySpace.
I don't know, just for nostalgia. I mean, you never know, it might be used. Now it's not going to be covered, now somebody will jump on it. All right, seventy-five forty point zero one, technology privacy. Mr. Cheatham?
Yep.
We are replacing that with the Neola template.
Seventy-five forty point zero one, anybody have any comments on that? Nope, all right. Moving on to seventy-five forty point zero two, district webpage. Mr. Cheatham?
We are replacing that. It has a new name, web content apps and services, seventy-five forty oh two, the Neola template. And again, I sent you guys the BPS recommendations.
Yes, you did.
Right.
Anybody have any comments on the district webpage component?
I noticed that the, I don't think this was included in your, the updates that you did the checkbox, but the July and September updates included the list of prohibited sites and apps that the DOE puts out and specifically mentions TikTok. So those are things we'll need to update as they updated that in the most recent rulemaking. And that was, I won't say, I won't just repeat it, but it was in point oh three, point oh four. And then I think in seventy-five forty-four, that any of those that talk about that, that.
The TikTok.
They gave that particular, you know, list, you know, check the list, you know, so that way we don't have to keep updating it. But did, they did specifically say TikTok, so I'm assuming they're not thinking they're going to take that off the list. But we want to make sure we include that language, too.
We'll reference the state rule when we make the update.
Right, right.
So we're good with that? All right, moving on, seventy-five forty point zero three, student network and internet acceptability and use and safety. Mr. Cheatham?
We are using the Neola template with changes sent.
Yep, you guys noticed. Just put all these notes inside there. If there's any comments you guys have.
And the staff, when the next one's almost exact.
Yep, same thing. I just need to move through it. All right, next up, seventy-five forty point zero four, staff, adult network and internet acceptable use and safety. Mr. Cheatham?
Adopting the Neola template with the changes sent to the board.
Yep. Anybody have any conversation on that? Hearing none, move on. Seventy-five forty point zero five, electronic mail. Mr. Cheatham?
This was renamed by a Neola district-issued staff email accounts and we are recommending to adopt the Neola template.
Any comments on that? All right, moving forward, internet filtering purse policy. Seventy-five forty point zero six. Dr. Rendell?
It's the same thing as all Mr. Cheatham here.
Yep. We're going to renumber, we're going to keep this policy, but we need to renumber it because Neola has a different policy in this number.
Sure.
So we will renumber this policy and submit it.
So you're going to renumber it?
Correct.
Any comments on that?
No, I recommend it remain as is, just with a, a different number?
Correct.
Okay, that's, I mean, I didn't see anything problems with it unless the, is, is that statute still named that, CIPA? The children's internet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I believe this was in an internal written policy, so we just need to renumber it. Because it was internal, we gave it our own number, but Neola used the number.
Gotcha.
All right, moving on, seventy-five forty point zero seven, network change management policy. I'm assuming this is Mr. Cheatham.
It's a BPS policy. BPS policy, policy that we want to keep in place.
You want to keep it in place. Don't see any updates. There's no Neola updates. We're good to go. Does anybody have any comments on that?
I'm good, just marking it as reviewed.
All right. Moving on, seventy-five forty point zero eight, mobile computing device assignment and use. Mr. Cheatham?
Remove policy. It's covered in seventy-five thirty oh one, seventy-five forty oh three, and seventy-five forty oh four covers this policy. So we're removing this one.
Are we all good with moving to the other policies? All right.
Yeah, I just had a note that on this one, on seventy-five forty point ten, seventy-five forty point twelve, and on seventy-five forty point thirteen, they've got some administrative procedures that if still relevant, need to be put in wherever they need to go because it seemed like they were important information, as long as they're updated.
Got it.
Good point, Ms. Campbell. Next up, it'd be seventy-five forty point zero nine, district IT incident response policy. Mr. Cheatham?
This is a BPS policy and we would like to keep it in place, but we will be making some revisions.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments on that?
Oh, hang on, seventy, are we, what number?
Seventy-five forty point zero nine, district IT incident response policy.
Gotcha, sorry, I was jumping.
No, that's okay.
I'm good.
Okay. Anybody else? Hearing none, let's move on to seventy-five forty point ten, district web services policy. Assuming that's Mr. Cheatham.
Yes, it is. We would like to remove this policy. These items are covered in seventy-five forty oh two.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak to that? Have any problem with that? Good. All right, moving on, seventy-five forty point one one, electronic data confidentiality.
We would like to keep this in place.
Keep it in place. It seems that, anybody else have any comments on it?
There may be some revisions, but we want to keep the policy in place.
No, I'm good with it as is, unless they have a recommendation.
Okay. Hearing nobody else, seventy-five forty point one two, network access from personally-owned computers and other web-enabled devices. Assuming that's Mr. Cheatham again.
We're going to replace this policy. It is covered in seventy-five thirty oh two.
Okay, does anybody wish to speak to this policy at all before it gets revised and sent over? All right. Moving on, seventy-five forty point one three, utilization of the district's website. Mr. Cheatham?
We're replacing this policy, but seventy-five forty-three.
Okay. Anybody have a problem with him replacing this policy? Seventy-five forty-three? All right, hearing none, moving on, seventy-five forty-two, access to district technology or resources from wireless communications devices. Dr. Rendell?
It's me as well.
Mr. Cheatham, one more time.
We're recommending to adopt the Neola template. If the board, as the board members review it, some of these policies, they cover a lot of social media and things that we've been talking about as a district for quite some time. So if you have any changes or any concerns, please let me know as we're updating it.
Perfect. Anybody have any comments on this? Going to bring forward the Neola template with some changes and move forward with it. All right. Next up, seventy-five forty-three, utilization of the district's website and remote access to the district's network. Mr. Cheatham?
Adopting the Neola's template. And again, with our remote work policies and things like that, I just asked the board to pay close attention and any concerns that you have for that, just send them our way and we'll, we'll address them.
Okay. All right. That is the last of the policies that we have.
There's seventy-five forty-four.
Hang on a second.
Two more, actually.
Oh, there we go. I'm so sorry, guys. Use of social media, seventy-five forty-four.
We're going to adopt the Neola template. And again, just because it's a hot topic as you guys review it, anything you see that you're concerned with, let me know and we'll, we'll make sure to incorporate that into the policy.
Yeah, I did have a question on this one because I was looking at the, the options that you selected and it looked like down, I'm trying to get the, the updates, I can't get them pulled up fast enough. In the one, there was, down at the bottom, it said like pick nine, 10, 11, or 12, or something like that. You, you marked 11 and 12, which was the part, it's towards the bottom. Employee use of personal communication devices that work for social media. personal communication devices that work for social media. The first one says, they're permitted to use personal communication devices to access social media for personal use during breaks and meal times, and then the second one says they can use it during work hours, provided it does not interfere with employees' job performance. So Neola had suggested that that's a, you do this or do that, so I didn't know, because I'm, seems like you don't really need, if you're going to do the second, you didn't really need to do the first, but I don't know if there was.
They kind of say the same thing, so if the board had a preference, that's kind of why I selected both of them. If the board had a preference, I'm fine with either one. Basically, it's saying that employees can use it either on their free time or time where they're not involved with instruction. The first one's just more, it's more specific of during breaks and meal times. The second one is just saying when, kind of free time, so it's less specific. But if the board had a, an opinion on one or the other, that's why I selected both, but if you don't, I'll pick one and move forward.
Okay.
Do you, do you guys have an opinion?
Just, go ahead.
Ms. Jenkins? I, I don't feel strongly either way, but I think it's better to just do the more broad and generalized one, because when you create policies that you can't really manage, I think that's kind of ineffective. I mean, when you have secondary schools where people have all different times throughout the day when they're free, the reality of managing that is impossible. Proving that you had free time and you weren't engaged in instruction is a lot easier.
Right, I mean, I guess the difference between the first option and the second option of, is, you know, are we going to say that a teacher on a planning period can't log, use her planning time or his planning time to log onto Facebook and check their thing? I mean, because that's not technically a break.
Right.
That's, that's work hours. I don't know that I'm ready to jump on that, because they're, they're planning time. If they waste it on social media, then that, that's their choice, they'll still have to do the work. I, I was just trying to think of where it might, I was trying to think outside, we always think about teachers, so I was trying to think outside of the classroom, but if we have that in there that doesn't interfere with the employees' job performance, you know, if you're a bathroom monitor.
So I could leave it broad, or I can try to list more things in option number one, but, you know, as I list them, I'm always going to, something's going to be missed or something's going to come up, so.
Right. Well, I just didn't want them to conflict. And I guess they don't conflict, they just, the second one kind of adds more on to it.
Yeah, I think option 12 or the second one we're referring to is probably safer. Because again, with option 11 or 9, depending on which page you're looking at, it just says breaks and meal times, and you got, and what's a break?
Right. Yeah. And we have different groups of employees who have different types of schedules and, and things like that, so.
Yeah, Mrs. Jenkins is right, the, the day of an elementary teacher is much different than the day of a secondary teacher, so defining what a break is and meal time and...
Right.
And next time we do this, I'm, again, this is the first time, but I'll include the numbers, so it's a little bit more clear which option was selected on each one of these. I apologize.
Yeah, I also have ended bounce back and forth a little bit to see which one.
The other thing is, it doesn't necessarily reply, apply just to teachers, it's all of our employees. So as long as it doesn't interfere with their job performance, I guess, is.
One other question for the board, in a lot of the Neola templates, it says it, it charges the superintendent, but in some of them, it says a superintendent or designee. Do you guys have a preference on that, or can I just work with Dr. Rindell to figure out what's, what's the best approach?
According to the definitions, capital S superintendent implies designee.
Okay.
Yes.
Good on seventy-five forty-four?
Good.
All right, moving on to seventy-five fifty, joint use of facilities. There's some notes in here to move it to eight-ten.
Seventy-five fifty's mine. I, I looked at eighty-one hundred, and that's the Neola template. Seventy-five fifty is a brevard policy, and I think eighty-one hundred is really the better approach. So my suggestion would be to delete this policy. I'll take a look at eighty-one hundred, make sure it incorporates this, I believe it does. There's a paragraph that talks about joint facilities. So my, that's my suggestion, is we delete seventy-five fifty and just incorporate what we need in eighty-one hundred.
Okay.
Yeah, and I wanted to take a second and thank Ms. Hand. We went to the Space Coast League of Cities last night and went through all of the, we met with the mayors and everybody else and spoke to our plan to visit the cities. Right now, as we speak, and emails going out to all the mayors, the city managers and city clerks to establish those meetings, and we should be on the road here pretty quick. It was well received, and I want to say thank you to Ms. Hand. Inter-local agreements and facility uses is one of the hot topics that they were speaking to. Some of them had brought up, they would like to create satellite locations for adult ed, in the fact that they could, they said that they could put 30 people, but they just can't, those 30 people could make it to that area, but not make it all the way to the other area. So there's going to be some really, really interesting conversations that wrap around some of these meetings. We were approached by some people from the community that were saying things about supporting students. I think it's going to be a great thing, so I want to say thank you, Ms. Hand. We had that policy, so. With that, I think we're in a good spot to move towards the next part of our agenda, which is to discuss public comment, and I think I'm going to give the floor to Ms. Campbell, who wants to speak on this topic, and then we can go from there.
Thank you. Yeah, I did some more, if anybody in the public read, was confused by the description, it's, it's the, the public, it's not a public speaking built-in 69, but it's the public speaking aspect of how that impacts us as a board. Did some more, some more thinking, talking, listening, soul searching, and I, I have, you know, I'm still going to put my, my suggestion on the table of just, you know, cutting off the cameras for the live streams specifically for all public comment, just so we're treating everybody the same, but then we would record it and to post it separately with content warnings if necessary, so we would always have those. And I think staff does a really good job of uploading things really fast. I think we're talking about like a day turnaround, we're not talking about a week before they get posted, but, you know, just something, they should be up there quickly. So I think, because that, that just gives us the, we're going to treat everybody the same, but this content might come, come out there, so, but there is another option that I would, if, if we could do that, and I think this is where, Mr. Trent, I appreciate you taking into consideration, you mentioned the other night about maybe, you know, separate agenda, non-agenda, again, like we had before because of the changes, but I actually think we, maybe we could have a, I, I very much appreciated your point of, it's not just the broadcast, it's who's in the room, because we also have children and students, other, you know, teenage students who, who attend frequently, we want them to attend, we encourage them, and we, we love to hear them speak even when they're not happy. It's students advocating for themselves and for their peers, and I appreciate that. So that point was well taken, and so I wondered if we might have, rather than agenda, non-agenda, because sometimes these will be on an agenda, but if we can put the book challenge process or someone who's going to come to do that, that part at the end, and we don't have it livestreamed, but we record it for posterity and anybody wants to see it, and we post it, but that we have that conversation towards the end, because then we don't have, we don't run the risk of exposing not just the, the broadcast audience, but our, our in-house audience to content that we might not want them to be exposed to. And again, I, I, I like these FCC rules, I think they're important, and I don't, I don't want to put that out just for my own level of, of comfort, and it's not just, I know when we think about these things, we think specifically about the explicit sexual content, but I have to go back to my statement that I made the other night, which is, there may be things that we don't want to broadcast that don't rise to the level or sync to the level of prohibited content. They don't sync to the level of that sexually graphic explicit material, but we still don't want them going out over our airwaves in a live broad stream. So that is, that is where my mind continues to go back to. So whatever the board would like to consider, I'm, I, you know, but I, I do want to put both those out there. One, that we just cut them off, and I talked to Dr. Rindell about that when I first had this concern last week, and I suggested that might be a good idea, just to have, just in general, to have them off while we're doing it and post them, or, but I would also suggest that maybe we could do that, have it as a separate section. But again, the non-agenda, agenda thing won't necessarily help because we, we, we will have these, if we do the policy change that we were talking about a month ago, then they will be an agenda item, and that doesn't solve that problem, so.
Okay, so if I can clarify, Ms. Campbell, you're trying to discuss moving public comment to be recorded and not go live, and I'm also hearing you say that there may be an opportunity where in relation to book challenge material and conversations, we would separate that to the end, and would we record those also?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe your recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay. So you would have two recordings if anybody was to speak to book challenges, so it'd be kind of like, okay, you have this, you have public comment, and anybody that comes in, unless it's on the agenda, like you said, we would move it to the afterwards and record that also and have two recordings?
No, I, I'm, I'm making, well, maybe I should have made one suggestion at a time. It's either or. My first suggestion was, if, if, if the board will go with me, is that we stop livestreaming the public comments, we just record them and put them on later, whether there's a book challenge process in there or not. So that would be my first suggestion, that we, that we just don't record it. The sec, if, if we're not willing to do that, my second suggestion was, because of Mr. Trent's point of people in the room, right, we've got to consider the audience in the room as well, that we move all book challenges, whether on agenda or not agenda, to the end. And part of that is going to require that, I, I think, there's no, how, you, we've looked at the law and it says challenge material, what, somebody could get up there and start reading, we don't know. And here's, here's why I think this is so important, because this is putting all of the weight and the decision-making on one person on the board to, of, of the work that we've done in policy and whatever, and again, not, we're think, we always think about the sexually explicit material, but there's so many other things that we don't want to, I wouldn't want to be broadcast, and we're putting all the weight on the chair, because they're the one who's going to make the call, of not knowing, of knowing whether this is one of the books or whatever, so we need to refine that either way to confirm that this is a book that's being challenged, or is it even a book that's on our shelves? Is it a book? I've had some people say, oh, you still have it. I'm like, no, we do not have it, but they're still looking at an old reference of where it is. So I'm trying not, I'm sorry that I'm mixing some kind of things, but I really feel like either or is, is what I'm looking at, Mr. Susan.
Okay. I will say, just for a point of clarification, I have no problem issuing and controlling the board's decision when these are coming up. Like, that's not an issue at all for me. So if that's ever kind of the weight of it and everything else, I've never felt the weight of it. I have no problem identifying the books that are being challenged, I have no problem doing all of that stuff. But I will clarify for you that Ms. Campbell would like to, one, make the recommendation to move not to record live, and two, in the event that there's a book challenges and stuff like that, she'd like to have that possibly separated. And then there was also a third component, which said that we would like to have a, hey, if this is a book that you wish to speak to, then please notify the book, and if it's being challenged or not, I'm, I'm okay with that component of it. That would be nice to know ahead of time, but those are the three things to discuss, so I'll leave the floor open if anybody wishes to discuss it. Anybody have any comments on it? Ms. Jenkins?
So, Mr. Gibbs, I have a couple of questions first.
Yep.
Legal questions. So if we decided to leave it as it was, and if we had one meeting where, you know, clearly it's abused, and then we decide meetings forward to change it, does that put us in legal jeopardy because it's obvious that we're changing it because of the behavior that was displayed?
As I said at the meeting, I think you could potentially run into a claim for viewpoint discrimination if you're only impacting book review type material. It's something I would want to look at with the case law out there, see if there's any possible guidance on it. If it's, the decision is, hey, you know, we're just going to cut public comment, I don't think so, because everybody that's providing public comment is treated the same.
Okay.
So everybody would be non livestreamed and recorded and posted.
Okay. My other legal question would be, are we going to put, put ourselves into a legal question if we don't do agenda, non-agenda, but we do just book challenges separately?
That would go back to, if you're moving, if you just moved them to the end of the meeting and livestreamed them, then you'd probably be okay. That's separating agenda versus there, but could someone make out a claim? They could argue it. I think that you would be on firmer ground, saying we're just controlling our agenda by moving those toward the end of the meeting, if someone wants to do that.
Okay. So I needed to ask those questions before I formulate my, like, final opinion here, but I, I get where you're going, Ms. Campbell, with putting the book challenges at the end. My concern is, that's going to be a lawsuit waiting to happen, where even if we're on firmer ground, it's not concrete. And it would concern me that someone would say if we're only putting book challenges in one area, that we're, we're classifying those when we shouldn't be, versus when we had agenda versus non-agenda, because we're not required to do non-agenda. So if we're going to do that, I think it has to be one or the other, and I'm not saying I'm for or against it either way, I just, that's just my concern legally. When it comes to live or recorded, so originally, when we had these conversations about cutting the camera, I was always against it because I think it fell into the trap of lack of transparency for the community, but if we're recording it, because that wasn't part of the conversation last time, then my concern goes away. I don't, I don't see the difference. It doesn't really matter if it's live or it's recorded, and I guess my question would be, we posted immediately after the live's over, so I don't, and someone, someone in GCR might yell at me and tell me this is impossible, but I don't see why we can't post the recorded right away, too. I don't know why there would be a huge lapse. So if, again, I would like to know the answer to that question, because if that's, if that's true, if it could literally get posted right after the meeting, then I have no problem with that. I mean, I don't, I don't see the concern there at all. The other thing, too, that I think is important for the public to be aware, is this bill isn't necessarily saying that parents have the right to read the passages aloud and be stopped at a board meeting, it has nothing to do with that. It's, the bill is intentionally written broadly, like every other piece of legislation that has come through in the past two years, so that it can be manipulated and/or put in the hands of other people to make these decisions and create the ramifications. And so what the bill is saying is that parents have a right to have access to the, to the book, whether it be electronic or in hand, and read it if it was objected, which makes sense, so you're not hiding the content that has been, has been objected to. But it has already been abused in other counties to be used a different way, and that wasn't the intention, in my opinion, when you read it, but there's nothing stopping them from getting away from that legally, correct, Mr. Gibbs? Because it's just broad?
You can read it in numerous ways, and that's where the attorneys have come down, is like, well, we read it this way, but the plain definition of to read is either read to yourself or read out loud, so if your public comment period allows non-agenda topics, they can come and read it out loud over their three minutes, and if you stop them based on the plain language and the, the rule, then you're supposed to stop use of that material.
Yeah. So the reason I bring that up is just for the public, because it's, because we're talking about it one way, the way it would be abused, I just want the public to be aware of, that's, that's the way it would be abused, that's not what it, I, at least, I don't think the main intention was here. The intention was so parents had access to those books that were being challenged, and they had a right to access those books. So I just want the public to be aware. This isn't a law that the state created intentionally for parents to come read at the podium, and we're trying to circumvent it anyway. And then I said this last time, but I'll say it again, I'm, I'm not concerned about the burden it puts on one person, I just think it's inappropriate that one person makes that decision for the entire district. I think that's the whole point of the policy in the committee that we had put in place, especially when it's the consequence of a very broadly written law that has nothing to do with that exact scenario. So I, I would be most in favor for leaving it alone, and if it's abused, changing it. I'm just concerned about the legal ramifications if we do that, because then the only solution would be changing it to agenda, non-agenda then, according to what I just asked, if someone else has a different clarification or question. I'm most in favor for that. Let, let the public react to this law, and if they choose to react a certain way, and we as a board choose to respond to it, I think that's the appropriate thing to do. But I'm also not against, that's my number one choice, but I'm not against Ms. Campbell's choice of recording it, as long as it's posted exactly when the live meeting is posted, which again, I don't understand why we can't do that. That way, there's, there's no delay and there's as little conflict as possible.
So I'm hearing you say that you're okay to move to not record them live, only if they can be released fairly shortly after the meeting. Is that true?
Okay. I don't need clarification of what I said, so I'm going to say it again, because I don't want it to get misinterpreted. My number one choice is to let it be, but if it's abused, I expect this board to have a conversation about the response to that, because I would hope that this board, like Ms. Campbell said, respects that that's not why this law was written, to be abused that way, to ban books off of our shelves, and I hope this board will respect the policy that they created themselves, and the committee they created themselves, and the people they appointed to the committee, to have that conversation if it's abused. That's my number one priority. My second choice would be to record it and post it immediately with the livestream.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Anybody over here? Mr. Trent?
I think it's good. I believe we need to, you know, continue with the conversation of first choice, second choice, yes, I guess we could leave it alone. I've always been a fan of splitting the public comment of agenda, non-agenda, agenda items, and then the not recording, you know, not livestreaming of the, the non-agenda items. Ms. Campbell, it, correct, it's going to be on the agenda at some point, books? And the good thing about that, I don't believe it'll be meeting after meeting, that it'll be on the agenda, so maybe at that point, we would, you know, fall back on the, the chair to take charge of that one. If we leave it the same way, I, I think we know which way, I, I think I know how the public comment's going to go, and we'd just be discussing this again at another time if we leave it. So I'm for splitting public comment, I am, and just off the top of my head, I think that would be wise. I mean, we, we have work to do, we have to govern, and, you know, we've seen meetings where, and you've seen longer meetings than me, where it's just, by the time we get down to doing what we're supposed to be doing, it's, it's way into the evening, and, and that's unfortunate. So I just think it would be a better way to run our meetings, but that's just, that's just my two cents there.
So you're suggesting a third option?
Well, you kind of had that, didn't you? And Ms. Jenkins mentioned it, too, about the, this is where we can discuss it.
Could you just clarify, you just wanna separate it, but you don't wanna stop the livestream?
On non-agenda items, I would stop the livestream.
You would?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. I couldn't hear you.
No, it's fine. It's just work.
Thanks. So, yeah, I think that's the same.
I thought it was.
But not recording? Recording and playing later?
Yeah, I don't mind if it's recorded. I think people need to hear it, if they wanna hear it.
Right.
You know, it's...
But it wouldn't be livestreamed?
Not livestreamed. I mean, I think that would stop. And it really isn't about who's speaking, when, I just don't think it's necessary. I mean, if the objective for public comment is to get us to hear something, then they're achieving it. If they, if it's anything other than that, it's not productive for us, and it's showy.
Right. And we've had that conversation before, you know, you don't have a constitutional right to our cameras and microphones. You know, you have a right to our ear. So, I understand that. I just, when we did that before, that was what everybody, so the difference factor would be the recording. You know, so I hear you.
Can I, I'm assuming this, but I just want to ask a legal clarification, and then make a statement in case anyone's listening. So, Mr. Gibbs, would there be an issue if we are recording it and posting it in its entirety in true form? In terms, is it just for live broadcasting where we fall into that issue?
What do you mean?
YouTube's full of all kinds of stuff, so I don't think we're breaking the rules there.
The FCC would only apply to our live broadcasts. At that point, you're on the internet and searching it out yourself, so you'd be fine.
So, I guess I'm just gonna make a statement, and I think it's a fair assumption here, but that, the three people who made that comment about recording it, the intention is for it to be recorded and posted exactly how it is, no editing, no, yeah, yeah. And, I mean, I'm assuming that, I just, you know, when people are gonna listen to this, they're gonna be really sensitive and concerned about that, so I wanted to say it publicly for all of us.
And a clarification of mine, when we talk about recording, say, recording non-agenda comments, are we talking video and audio, or just audio?
Yeah, just like we do other things. And to, hey, to jump in here, I mean, just, other, some of the other boards in the state don't have to deal with this, because they either don't record and broadcast their meetings at all, and there are a few counties who don't, they don't, if you wanna watch the meeting, you gotta be there in person, or they don't livestream it, they record it, and they upload it later. So, these rules don't apply to them. That doesn't handle my personal code of, I don't want it going out on my watch, but it does, they don't have to deal with FCC rules, like the counties, like ours, that livestream. So, it's, some counties just don't have to deal with that. So, they have just allowed whatever to happen, and they're dealing with it, because it's been happening in other places besides just Indian River.
Okay. So, real quick, if I can kinda make some sense out of it, I know, I know, I know, I know, but just so I can get this, the conversation has been wrapped around livestreaming or recording, right? The agenda items, and then the other topic that's sort of starting to come up is whether we move to agenda and non-agenda items. And we've kinda given some conversation around that. If I could just ask real quick, Ms. Campbell is in favor of recording them, are you also in favor of splitting the agenda to the non-agenda?
If that's where we can get, I mean, that's why I had this conversation, let's just everybody kinda talk and come up what we can come to consensus to, because I could be in favor of that. You know, at some point, it's going to be on the agenda, so that's, and to your point, Mr. Trent, that's gonna be, it's whenever the committee makes a recommendation, right, and then we'll have to come up, and then it will just depend. I could be agreeable to that.
So, what you're saying, if I can get this straight, is you're okay with splitting the agenda, non-agenda, and then what you're saying is, is that we would not record the non-agenda, or could you give some clarification to that? So, say, we split it, which is what she says she's in favor of, are you saying to record both agenda and non-agenda and release them? Or are you saying to only record the non-agenda? I just...
No, no. Are you asking what I really want? I don't believe that would be, I don't think we can get, I don't think we could weigh with that. I think we should record both. And I believe that's what Ms. Jenkins and Ms. Campbell are both saying.
Record both or broadcast?
We're not gonna live, no, not livestreaming it.
Which one?
The non-agenda.
Okay, right, 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 that's what I thought.
You need to do the agenda.
So, we would livestream the agenda, not livestream, and record the non-agenda?
Correct.
Okay?
I, from what I'm hearing, that's exactly what...
Is that what you're saying?
The two have spoken so far have also said.
Yeah, I was, the separation I was originally suggesting was just moving the book challenges to the end, whether they're agenda or non-agenda, but that's not gonna fly. That's fine.
Okay. Mr. Gibbs, are we, is that something we can do, if we separate them from agenda to non-agenda?
Yeah, no, non-agenda, you know, you can eliminate non-agenda comments altogether. So, if the board says, "We're only gonna hear comments to the agenda items at night," then the board is well within its rights to do so.
All right. So, it looks like it has legal standing, looks like you have. Ms. Jenkins, is that something that you would support, doing, separating the agenda to non-agenda and going that route?
Mr. Susan, I already said my piece.
I think he's trying to get it straight in his own mind.
Just trying to get it straight here, so that we can then move forward.
And after, I'm sure after we hear from the two of you...
Go ahead, Ms. Megan.
It's clear as mud. Yeah, this is one of those things where, listen, public comment is, everyone loves free speech, but when it comes down to the time to actually defend it, which is kind of where we're at right now, like, how much do you love it? I get it, it's not comfortable. I guess the FCC regulation is really what is messing with us on televising live, if I'm understanding this correctly, the stuff that's getting read from, is that correct, Mr. Gibbs? That is really what this is all about.
The FCC rules play into it. Now, I'll say, I've never heard of a district get hit for an FCC violation for allowing people to read books on their broadcast, and there are some counties that have allowed it for a while, even before the book challenge statute came down. They had people come and read books and argue the book shouldn't be there, and they've never been hit.
To clarify, though, obscene, this is straight from the FCC Rules page, obscene content does not have protection by the First Amendment. So, I talk about defending, I will defend the First Amendment, and I actually don't, I will defend, I'm gonna, our public is gonna come alive and unglued if we don't allow non-agenda items at all, which is our right to do. But just to be clear, this isn't a free speech, you don't have a right to say everything you wanna say at every location that you want to say it. That's not the First Amendment.
So, I'm where I was before, and as uncomfortable as that situation is, so I guess at this point, it sounds like the board majority is moving a different direction anyways, but I can see the benefit of having agenda versus non-agenda. It probably would help this board as far as governance goes, just because it is a little rough to have to hear 30, 40 people come out and hurl insults for three minutes, and then be in your best, you know, frame of mind to govern afterwards. So, if there were any compromise I was gonna make on this one, it would be, I would be in favor of supporting the agenda versus the non-agenda split. As far as televising it live versus playing it back, here's the other reality, is that if somebody sits here and reads it, and we're not streaming it live, and there's kids in the room, the kids in the room are still hearing it, so it doesn't protect them if we're not streaming it live, you know what I'm saying? So, that's where I just like, this is, there's no perfect answer in this situation, unfortunately. There really isn't. And so, what I hope would happen is that the community would recognize the fact that we have revised the policy, that we have put into place some protections at this point, so the need to come here and read a book doesn't really, it's not necessary, because the book isn't accessible if it's gone through the formal challenge process anyway, so all you're really doing is looking for a three-minute clip. And then the other thing I'll say about agenda versus non-agenda, which is very maddening to me, is that we have people come, and they speak every single week, or every other week, whatever it is at our board meetings, and never once try to reach out to any, well, to me anyways, I don't know about you guys, to sit down and talk to us about these things, to actually have a conversation. So, public comment is frustrating, it is extremely frustrating, because we understand that people are doing it because they want to have three minutes of a clip, in essence. And so, you know, again, where I'm at, where I fall, is if I were gonna do any compromise, it would be, I would split the agenda versus the non-agenda. That way, people are speaking towards the things that we're actually governing on that evening, and then at the end of it, we can take the, you know, attacks that are gonna get hurled over, things that are not on the agenda, so.
All right. So, Paul, it would be a policy change to move it to separate, correct?
Yes, we'd have to change the policy, and in the meantime, you would have to make motions to split the agenda again, like you've done in the past. But just some considerations that came up last time we had the split is, how are you gonna handle someone who wants agenda and non-agenda topics? Are you gonna take all of their comments in one three-minute block during agenda? In which case, you're creating a loophole, so somebody will talk to an agenda item for 30 seconds, and then spend the rest of their two and a half minutes reading a book? Or are you going to say, you get two three-minute periods, you can have your three minutes on an agenda topic, and then three minutes at the end on non-agenda topics like we did last time?
I think we can get to that in a second, and we can also get to that. I just, I wanted to say that I do hear a board majority, I'll speak to all these topics, but before I get going, I just wanted to make sure, I hear a board majority of splitting the agenda topics. I wasn't completely sure on whether we are recording these, or if we're going to let agenda and non-agenda run. Can I get clarification on that? Megan, did you want to allow it to be recorded, or do you want it to allow it to be live?
I guess I, to me, I was in favor of live always, but that's, yeah, I don't think that's a majority. It sounds like everyone's kinda in favor of recording versus...
Okay. And I'm sorry to go back in reverse order, but...
Yeah, that's okay.
Mr. Trent, you are to record the, both agenda and non-agenda, and split them, too? Is that kind of the direction that you would like to go?
I would prefer livestreaming the agenda comment...
Okay.
And record the non-agenda.
Okay. And then, Ms. Campbell, can you give clarification?
Right. If we're gonna split agenda, non-agenda, I would, like Mr. Trent, I'd rather livestream the agenda comments and record the non-agenda, to be posted soon after.
Okay. And Ms. Jenkins, you wanna give some clarification?
Yeah, so, I just, I wanna reiterate, there is a board majority, but I do wanna reiterate, like, my number-one choice is to allow the public to speak and not abuse it first. But because there's already a board majority, and my second choice was, if there was a problem, we'd get to this point anyway, my preference would be to just record it, there's no point, there's no point of livestreaming it. But I do, I just wanna throw this out there to you guys, but also to the public, there's still nothing stopping the public from abusing this, by walking up to an agenda for an agenda item and not speaking on the agenda, and then being stopped.
Correct.
Did I cut him off?
And so, I really hope that people don't do that. And again, I'm gonna say it again, if we get to that point, I hope that this board is willing to have a conversation about what to do from that point forward, because that's just inappropriate.
I would say there is, it's not, I don't know that I've ever seen it be used, in fact, there were several times over the last couple of years it should've been used, but there, among the things that the board chair can stop a speaker for includes, when it's too lengthy, obviously, that's when the timer goes off, personally-directed except as allowed above with us, right? Abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. So, if someone comes up to speak to an agenda item, and they start going off another topic, the chair can stop them for speaking, for speech that's irrelevant. You know, there's a couple of times in the past...
But this is written so broadly that they could apply this, probably.
Well, I'm gonna say that would, I'm gonna say it wouldn't, because he would stop him not for the language and the book, but because this is not the agenda item, so, no, you know, so, you know, it's something that is already built into our policy. So, if someone, and it's built in, therefore, someone comes up and starts talking about immigration policy, the chair should be able to stop him and say, "Thank you so much, I appreciate your concern, but that doesn't, that's not relevant here, we have no control over that." And we've had, I only use that example, because we had somebody talk about that one time. That is absolutely an abuse of, "I want your microphone and your camera to, you know, to do whatever thing." But I, you know, Ms. Wright and Ms. Jenkins, you both mentioned, we hope no one would, but I want you to remember that a few meetings ago, we had three ladies stand up and read from books who are already in the process, and so, yes, I would want them to know, "Hey, the process is going, we, these are already off the shelf," but yet, they were already doing it. So, we've already had it happen, actually, here, we just didn't have in place this statute and this conversation, so, you know, I...
Yeah, and I, and I'm only saying that just because this is complicated, and we've come to, I'd say, a compromise and agreement amongst everyone. And again, my first choice was to let it go and then to get here, but we're here, so let's talk about it. But I just want people to be aware of that, so when it happens, it's not like, it doesn't seem like it's reactionary for me to say, "Hey, we need to have this conversation," because this has always been my true intention, regardless of who's coming up to that microphone and taking advantage of it. It's just wrong, it's inappropriate. So, I just hope we can be open-minded if we have to get there. I hope we don't have to get there.
So, I think we have clear majority for separating them, too, and not recording, or I'm sorry, going to a recording of the non-agenda items. I think I'm hearing that pretty clear. I did want to tell everybody my viewpoints. Florida statute 610 requires a disclaimer for any of this FCC stuff, and it allows a governmental entity with a disclaimer to continue to not worry about violating FCC rules. Part of the reason that we haven't seen anything come out is, is because there's that gray area, but there, I think, moving forward, we should have a disclaimer, in the event that that protects us from any kind of those governmental, so I would say that.
You mean regardless of what happened?
Yeah, I just, I've just gotta have a disclaimer, and it's actually inside of some of the scripts, but it's not written as a disclaimer, it's kinda just like, "Hey, you gotta act correctly," but as a disclaimer to give us some sort of padding there. I would say that I'm concerned about us coming forward with this based upon a single issue, going back as long as I have, we've seen so many regarding issues coming up to change policy based on that, and I feel very confident that the decision that you guys made was to move, separate all non-agenda items, which is not saying, okay, because I was beginning to have a problem with you guys separating based upon only book challenges, right? That would've been kind of the inappropriate way to do it, I feel. But I do feel this, I do feel that I pushed forward a policy that said that I agreed to let everybody come up, have their three minutes during the agenda piece, and to let it run. So, that's where my feelings are, is that I don't mind it being live, I don't mind it being, I would vote to have it live, and I would vote to have it to where they could speak during the agenda items for public speaking. But I do appreciate you guys' concern, and I do appreciate you guys separating it. What I would say is, if your concerns are over some of the stuff happening, that, Paul, we move this policy forward. It should be a very brief, quick one, so I don't know if you can notice it and bring it forward for conversation. Are you guys okay with a fast-track on this thing happening?
I'll get it on the next available, it might not, it's probably not gonna be the 19th, so you're probably looking at October, just because.
Do you feel like you have, and I'll give everybody a chance to talk, I know everybody wants to kinda say something afterwards, but, Paul, do you feel like you have a clear direction on what you need to put in that policy?
The only thing that's missing is, are you doing the two, three-minute pieces that I had brought up earlier?
My direction would say to give them the two minutes, the two, three-minute periods, I'm not gonna split and try to take 2:45 of one and 15 of another, and if that's okay with you guys, it would be easier to flow.
And that'll make it more difficult for the chair to stop someone for being irrelevant, if we're telling them, "This is the only time you get to speak." It does give the opportunity for people to speak multiple times, which honestly, some people have asked for.
Yeah.
But if they're willing to stick around to the end of the talk with a different issue, but I think we do need to have, the chair's gonna need to, and when I say the chair, don't think just about you, posterity's sake.
No, 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 I get it.
Whoever is in that role needs to be able to stop someone for being irrelevant, and if we make them do it all at once, they're not gonna be able to do that.
I will, I will say this, you guys, the main thing, and I wanted to make this clear as far as what I believe in allowing them to come, is this, is that we have sometimes a long meeting, and we have employees that come to speak to us on specific topics, and when they have to come up here, and they have to wait until the end of the meeting, it was kinda hard, you know what I mean? But to that regard, they also have the availability to send us an email and to communicate with us, which is what Ms. Megan was asking for, so I completely understand that argument, too. So, I think we have some clear direction. Paul, if you can figure out a way to get it as fast as possible, because I hear that from the board?
Can I ask one technical question, Paul, real fast, real, because I don't know if this needs to be written into the policy or not, but the chair has the ability to stop public comment when it's, if we change the policy, as we're saying we're changing the policy, when a public comment comes forward, and they're speaking to a not, non-agenda item, under the agenda item, the chair has the ability to stop them. Is there a way to write into policy that after, like, "Hey, three strikes, you're out," so like, they will lose their right to continue public comment if they don't?
No, I wouldn't.
I wouldn't go there, I would just, like, if someone gets up there, as mentioned, and wants to read a book during the agenda portion, and it's not on the agenda, you're not stopping them. I think that the chair's response should be, "Excuse me, you're speaking to a non-agenda topic during the agenda, do you have an agenda topic you would like to discuss tonight? If not, I will move you to the non-agenda portion, and you can come back up, and you can read your book at that time, during the scheduled appropriate time for your comment." It's not, we're not stopping you, it's like, this is the agenda portion of the meeting, so that the board can get on with its business, you're free to come back at the non-agenda portion. So, I mean, I think that would be the appropriate way to go.
Just move them to the end.
Yeah, they would just go, and we would just, he would just put a note out on, beside their name, "Non-agenda," and they would go to the end of the non-agenda list.
So, also, Paul, just so everybody understands, we don't have to pass the policy in order to do this. If you remember, when we moved to have this changed from the last time, I can enact it at the next policy at the next meeting. If you guys would like me to move forward with that, I can have Ms. Lena put that together, and we can move immediately forward with it.
Well, one of us will need to bring a motion, yes, I'm happy, you know.
Yeah, at the beginning, I mention it, then you guys bring the motion, then we vote vote on it, then we move forward, and we can go that route.
Yeah, and because they're gonna have to draft like a new script, I mean, can just, can you put that line in there?
Yeah, we can make a, the way we did it before was, we put a little spot, is there a motion to split agenda and non-agenda?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, no, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Susan asked for that, right? I just meant, like, just another reference point for Mr. Susan or whoever becomes the chair in November.
If someone gets up there and reads them.
Yeah, just like, you know, when you panic in the moment, you know, just so it's right then and there, so you say the right thing, and so we don't accidentally stop them when that wasn't the intention.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, Mr. Brown, you got things from that end as far as recording, and, oh, do you have something you wanna say?
Yeah, are you able to answer about the timeline? Before I, before I make a statement and a promise, that's not possible.
Yeah, I think it is important just to, to set expectations for the board and the public. Technically, it is not the same to record the public comment as we do with the board meeting. The board meeting obviously is on a broadcast channel, and that is live, and then it's played back along with other meetings, so that will be fine. Our YouTube channel, where we also broadcast, is a live broadcast, and so that, once that's done, that automatically generates the recorded clip. In order to record public comment off camera and during a meeting time, we would use a separate camera and audio, and we would then, after the meeting, take that file and put an in-and-out point on it, and obviously no editing, and upload it to YouTube with proper language about what the content is. And that takes a little bit of time, so if Dr. Rendell would, you know, direct me to have my staff do that after the meeting on Tuesdays or Thursday nights, we would do that, but it would not be instant, it would be 30 minutes or so.
So is it, is it reasonable, though, to say within 24 hours?
Yes, very much, yeah. It could be the next morning, it'd be better for everybody's mindset, but it could be that night if it's, if it's necessary.
I don't want Mike to have to stay an extra hour or two to get it, get it done, the next day is fine.
The other thing is, is that we never used to record it before. So at the end, if somebody wanted to come and give the testimony, you didn't have to record it. Like you, we just, that was it. Like, you come speak to us, we wouldn't have to have Mike making the recording and all of that stuff. You don't have to record non-agenda items, that's all.
We have always since I've been on the board.
I, I just, the reason, the reason I'm trying to be specific about it, and we don't have to put an hour on it, but the reason why I'm trying to make the conversation specific is, you know, we are at a very fragile time and sensitive time where people are always concerned, like, when, when we lose livestream, they think it's on purpose, right? And so, if we can err on, if we can err on the side of being as transparent as physically possible, or at least when discussing it, like, our intention is to get it out within 24 hours. I just, I think that's important. I don't, I don't think that it needs to literally be a black and white thing, but just so that as the public listening to this conversation, they know the intention is for it to be as soon as possible.
Right, and you wouldn't wanna write in policy, it shall be, you know...
Yeah, it would be pretty quick turnaround, but it does take time, it's not as instantaneous as, as it is on our website, which is an automated program as well, or it's live, so just technical issues there.
Well, you need like a one-minute, you know...
Probably good to do a break, so we can switch to cameras.
Because it would be a little bit distracting to have the, the equipment, you know, up here during a meeting for two hours or three hours, and then all of a sudden, we use it finally. So I wouldn't wanna do that to the...
And one thing, just for, because you guys, we changed the, right, when you guys got on the board, but just to remind our, us and new board members, we will not be able to conduct any business after that. Like, the meeting will pretty much be officially done when we make that switch, and so we won't, you know, it'll just be listened to, the last however handful of people, maybe direct them to staff, and then...
So you kinda answered my question I was about to ask, or refreshing, refreshing my memory, this happens after board discussion, correct? So it's like...
Well, that's your, that's your decision. I mean, we, we'll accommodate anything we can to the best of our ability.
Okay, I was just curious, I don't remember. Yep. We were done with like everything.
Anybody else have anything else before the, for the good of the order? Hearing none, I wanted to mention to you guys that I'll be asking law enforcement agencies to review social media to see if anybody broke it based upon our Vieira situation that we had, where there was some people posting some stuff. Anything else, should be good.